Rob?
Rob.
What is your new title?
I know that's what's gonna happen.
I didn't know you could.
Assistant. Okay.
Good evening, everybody. We call this meeting, City Laconia Planning Board, to order at 6:30 PM. Could we have the roll call, please?
Sarah Jenna. Jay Forrester.
Yeah.
David Broton.
Yeah.
Gail Denio.
Here.
Mike Delvickia.
Here.
Edwin Bonas.
Here.
Claudia Marshase.
Yeah.
Brett Bellevue.
Here.
And Chair Peter Burnett.
Well, thank you very much, and the staff is here tonight. And I think Dean would agree that we should be congratulating Rob on his new appointment as the Assistant Planner. So congratulations. And let's hope it works out for you. I always say that in employment issues, you know, just to encourage the troops and hope that works out for you. Let's see, acceptance from minutes previous meetings, I... Oh, I'm sorry. Let the record show that Counselor David Bounds has suggested joining the group.
Like I say.
Good evening.
Not last minute, you're way too early.
Yeah. You owe Rob a clap?
Pardon?
You owe Rob a clap. We just applauded his new job as the Assistant Planner.
Rob is the new Assistant Planner.
What?
His promotion.
His promotion? I thought you said you wanted to make a motion. I'm getting deaf here. Okay. Meaning, back at the meeting, so we've all had an opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any comments, objections, or any other discussion regarding said minutes? There never is. So, could I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I make a motion to accept the missions from last week.
All right, and the motion's by Mr. Broton. Is Sarah a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bonas. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes unanimously. Boy, we get to jump down quite a bit, don't we? Public hearings. We have a public hearing tonight on PL 2018-0103 CUP, wetland conditional use permit on Eastman Shore North. Oh, it's 201 Eastman under the new designation. It's a proposal to build a 50-by-60 barn with a six-foot-wide gravel path. And we could hear from the applicant on that one.
Steve Smith and Associates. I'm representing the applicants, David and Lorraine Jenks, on property on Eastman Shore Road and Eastman Shore Road North, or Eastman Road and Eastman Shore Road North. That's map 293-285-3. And I've taken... There's a lot of information on this plan because it's the same plan that we submitted to the Wetlands Bureau for our wetlands permit. I've highlighted some things to hopefully better establish what's on the plan. We have a total land area here of 5.59 acres. The Jenks live, and I've highlighted in yellow in the bottom of the sheet, Jenks reside here. They own this property here. Goes back a little further to this dogleg out to Eastman Shore Road and this location. I was before the planning board, almost a year ago, I think, to get a boundary line adjustment to add this piece to this property. Their goal originally was to put a road through there and access the barn from that location. But, of course, once we did all of our fieldwork and did our wetlands mapping, we determined that that wasn't practical, nor would we be able to get a permit from the Wetlands Board for that kind of an impact in wetland. Our proposal is to construct a barn, and that's the darker shaded area up in the corner. The barn is located in the upland area, and there's an existing gravel drive in here now, and we want to build a six-foot-wide path from here so the Jenks can access the barn from there without going all the way around. We originally, we met with the Conservation Commission on three or four occasions, very preliminary when we had some ideas of where we wanted to put the barn, how we wanted to access it, discussing how we do it, how would minimize wetland impacts, and why we were doing it, and where we were putting it. If you look at the site, there's an intermittent drainage in this area which cuts this off from the property to the north. They have another, I'm guessing probably another two acres to the north. But this is a pretty good-sized ravine, pretty good intermittent drainage area. We have, this is upland area, this white in here, this is upland area, this is upland area, this is upland area here. And then, of course, we have a lot of threads of wetland. When you look at this site, right in this area right here, there's almost two acres of upland property. But when you apply the setbacks from the boundary lines, you apply the buffers from the wetlands, the only building area you have is here, here, and here. And in here, you can't build in the setback in this area and this area, so the only real building areas are here, here, and here, in meeting the buffer. So, we looked at the site in terms of doing what they wanted to do, to try to minimize impacts to the site, where would be the best place for the barn, where would be the best place for the path, what would minimize impacts to the wetland. There are some, if these narrow wetlands weren't here, this barn could go in here and wouldn't be a problem, but these are actually man-made ditches to get this water to drain to this pipe here. Forecaster entitled some point in time, probably dug those ditches, trench those out to get water to drain down through there. Over the years, it then became wetland. Once a wetland surrendered jurisdiction to the state, doesn't matter how it got to that point. So, we felt that that location would be a good location where we could minimize any impacts to any wetland that's really drainage swales. If we built that barn without those there and put those trenches in to drain, over a period of time, they'd probably become wetland anyway, in terms of the state regulations. So, we approached the project in trying to come up with a ability to have a use of this property, minimize any impacts to the wetland itself. The end result was, we had three wetlands crossings for our path. We have a wetlands crossing coming off the road. We have a wetlands crossing in this area here, and we have a wetlands crossing from this drainage ditch to get into the barn area. There's one, two, three actual impacts to wetland. That wetland impact is, I believe, is 600 and... 600 and something, 70 square feet, if I can find my notice. 690 square feet of actual wetland impact. Other than that, the impacts that we have are impacts to the buffer under your regulation. Again, we met with the Conservation Commission. We went to the Wetlands Bureau with their blessing. We actually originally started with an eight-foot path, and through our process with the wetlands, they asked us to make it six feet, so we dropped it down to six feet instead of the eight feet, which even minimized the impacts more. Wetlands were all mapped by certified wetland scientists. They were all field mapped by survey. I filled out your application. I addressed all the issues under the, your standards for conditional use, and I noticed that they are actually in the staff review. Think they addressed those themselves. So, I would turn it back to the chair and be happy to answer any questions that you might have relative to our proposal. The only question I have under the staff review, under project completion deadlines, calls for site security. I'm not aware that any site security's ever been posted for residential development, so we didn't do a construction estimate because we're not aware of that being common practice. So, I had a question on that.
It may not be necessary, Steve.
That's all. Just thought I'd bring it up.
Okay.
So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you, and I'd be happy to, I'd address any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Just a question. You said that curved drainage swale or ditch, once it starts to retain water, it becomes a wetland under the jurisdiction of the state?
No, over a period of time, it can, a lot of drainages that we design, detention basins and outlets, when you first design them...
Creating.
They aren't wetland.
Right.
But after a number of years, because of all the water that they retain and get, a lot of them become a wetland, and then they become jurisdictional.
So, talk to me a little bit about the drainage on this site that would be affected by the proposal.
Well, the main one would be affected is that drainage swale because we're beside it here. That's why we've stuck it way over here, and not, these are natural occurring wetlands. We've stayed away from those.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we might propose to put this type of swale to get the water to this pipe which is already there. If we were designing this today and building this, and this wasn't wetland, we'd put a drainage swale in there to direct water.
How are you gonna cross it?
We're proposing a cross here. That's one of our crossings with the wetlands. That's crossing number three.
So, a cylindrical culvert of some sort?
Yes. This culvert across the access into the site is 180 square feet of disturbance. There's a fill area here with 383 square feet of disturbance, and then there's one down here at the road, the culvert, 127 square feet. That's how we come up with this 690 square feet of total impact to wetland. And we tried to meander the trail to cross at the narrowest points that we could cross and do the least amount of disturbance that we could do.
Thank you. Any members of the board wish to ask Mr. Smith a question? Dave?
Yeah. Your drive coming in off the side of the Eastman Road, that's the gravel driveway?
Yep. That's existing.
Oh, it's existing?
Yes.
Okay. And where are they accessing the barn? It doesn't, it's not clear on the drawing.
Well, there's a, it shows it right this way here is that access. There's the access areas right here.
Okay, so that gravel driveway doesn't go straight, straight down and into where it looks like, I don't know if that's underground utilities or something that's on the drawing?
It doesn't go into where the, this is undisturbed area right now, but we need an access into the doors to the barn. So, there's a crossing right here. I know it's hard to see because there's so much information on it, but there's a driveway crossing right, comes off this driveway, turned into this area to get into the garage.
Yeah, okay. I see that.
There is a detail on the plan.
Yeah. There's a lot of details on the plan that require...
Yeah, there's a lot of, lot of stuff on there.
So, the idea is to say they won't have to go out onto the road, go around the corner, and come in off that gravel drive.
When they're down...
They can stay on their own property.
Right. They can come out here and come up here to access the barn. I mean, they can drive in here if they want to drive up there for something, but common access for them is to just go out and go over there instead of going all the way around.
So, the six-foot-wide gravel path is probably not intended for vehicular traffic?
Well, that was one of the reasons why the Wetlands Bureau said, hey, will you go to six? We don't want vehicles up in there. Will you go to six instead of eight? Because they said a truck or a car could get up there on an eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
I get it.
That was exactly one of the reasons why they asked.
It says here to propose to pave the existing gravel access. Is that part of your request?
Yeah.
We didn't talk about that. Is that, so the road coming off the current access is going to get a pavement?
Yeah, this is gonna get paved into here.
Okay.
Yep.
And is that the car access in theory?
Yeah. Yep. That's the current vehicle access into the site now.
And the only utilities will be electricity in the barn?
No, they're going to put a bathroom in here because they don't want to be up here working in the barn and not having to go outside, so we're putting a leach field right over in this corner here.
So, there's a leach bed going in there with a tank?
Yeah, it has to be for a bathroom.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
That's out of the buffer, that's out of the, any area of disturbance that would require conditional use permit for.
Yeah. And a five-acre lot, you don't have to get approval, right? For the septic system?
Oh, yeah.
You do?
Oh, yes. You don't have to get approval for subdivision if you're dividing a piece of property of five acres or greater.
Right.
But once you build, you have to have septic approval. If you're gonna have a residence or have bathrooms, have gray water, any running water, you have to have a gray water system, which is same as a leach field.
Right.
In that case. But yes, that has to be state-approved.
So, you're getting a state-approved septic system for that?
We will.
Okay.
So, the permanent impacts are going to be where the road crosses the wetland?
Yes, so 690 square feet. Yep.
All right. My pleasure. Staff or public hearing?
Public hearing first.
Okay. We're gonna open the public hearing at 6:45. Are there any members of the public or our butters that wish to address the board this Any butters? Any members of the public wish to speak? This project is on Eastman Shore Road North. Well, sensing none, we'll close the public hearing at 6:45, and we would love to hear the staff recommendations.
Well, you have my written recommendations. I would agree with the applicant's agent that there's very little land left on this part of the property that is not either wetland or within the buffer, so it's difficult to do anything on this piece of land, hence the process for giving a conditional use permit.
Yeah.
They have taken care to wind the path through that little panhandle to disturb the least amount of the wetlands as possible. So, therefore, we are recommending approval with some conditions. We need to revise the plan.
What about the suggestion from the applicant that the site security condition?
You can, we can strike that.
Okay. I'm gonna find that.
I wanna make that as part of, when you refer to the staff recommendations, just delete that one item. I do want to point out that, as has been stated, they are required to have a DES wetlands permit, which they have already obtained, and they will, and they will also get the permit and the process for the leach field, the septic system. And I also want to draw attention to the applicant and also to the board that they will need to get a driveway paving permit from DPW to do the paving.
See that. And so, the proposal is to, is to write "not applicable" on 1B?
Sure.
That's, that's how we deal with that?
Yep.
Are there any questions for staff? All right. Sensing none, I guess we'd entertain a motion at this point.
I make a motion that we accept this application, number PL 2018-0103 CUP, for the wetlands buffer, and to include the staff conditions part of this approval.
Intending to correct or amend 1B?
1B.
To read "not applicable"?
Correct.
Is that correct? All right. Is there a second for Mr. Broton's motion?
Well, I second it, but we're really granting conditional approval, not just accepting the application, we're granting conditional...
Conditional approval. Thank you very much. Thank you for that clarification, Counselor. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All right. How do you vote on the motion for conditional approval? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? And it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Smith, as always.
He'll be back.
Okay. Moving right along. I can't find anything. This is why I like paper and hate it at the same time. All right. All right, so we are at application acceptance. This is, this is not a public hearing, it's just to determine whether this application is ripe, shall we say. We're referring to application PL 2018-0104 SP. It's 435 Union Avenue, the Presidential Cottages and Woodside Pavilion at Taylor Home. It's a proposal to add six single-family units and a pavilion. And is there someone here from the application?
No, no, no discussion.
No discussion?
This, this application is ready to be accepted.
Okay, so that's the only issue?
The plan's complete.
It is complete.
It is complete.
Thanks.
Staff recommendation is that we accept it. Is there any questions for staff on it? Okay. Sensing none, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the application, PL 218-10104 SP, at 435 Union Avenue, Presidential Cottages, and Woodside Pavilion, Taylor Home.
Motion by Ms. Denio.
I prefer to a public hearing on January 8th.
January 8th for a public hearing.
Motion's amended to include a public hearing on January 8th, 2019. Is there a second to Ms. Denio's motion?
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Bonas. Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hands because you don't like aye. And opposed? I suppose it's better for accountability. The motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. The Capital Improvement Committee recommendations. What do you know? So, some of us here slaved over a hot bureaucratic stove and listened to the presentations of a number of departments, and in a highly scientific way, determined scores for the various presentations based upon the criteria that are set forth, and what were the three things? The public need, right? Public liability, and infrastructure improvements, which is often kind of the same of public need. I see other members of the committee are here tonight. Thank you very much for your service, gentlemen. Before you is a document entitled memorandum, and the process here is that, as Chair of the Capital Improvements Planning Committee and on behalf of the members that did all the work, we're recommending that this board adopt the Capital Improvement Plan Committee report and, and forward it to the city council with the blessings of this board. Is there anything that Dean, you wouldn't want to add, or Rob?
Nope. That's your task.
Is there anybody that was on the committee that wants to say something at this point? It'd be a great idea. Would you identify yourself for the record, sir?
Greetings. How are you doing? My name is Michael Foot, 222 Roller Coaster Road. Surfed on CIP for some time now, and I was originally asked by Chris Snow as a part of it, not having an idea of what it was, was brought to it and saw the layout of it. In this here, we take input from all of the heads of the departments and, in a highly scientific way, are able to come out with a rating for these projects that go forward. Usually, what we see at the top is, we like to maintain the roads because it costs so much to get back once you start to let everything slide. There's other things that are needed, and there's things that work for different areas of the community. I really want to thank everybody this year. I thought it was an all-star cast of the CIP and was able to bring out some people from both planning and from our city council to be able to see the process also. Hopefully, this is able to bring something forward. Any feedback for it as to, usually on this here, you find that the top 12 items may or may not get funded, but certainly puts them in line. And also, what you are able to see is a bit of the future of the city as they look out five years also. So, you get a sense of what's coming down the pike.
Yep.
And so, in that, that is what I believe the setup is, is to provide at least some guidance, some feel, you know, for what's wanted in the city, and hopefully, it's able to assist in some way.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Foot. Also on the committee was Ava Doyle and Bruce Cheney, Aron Charlie St. Clair and Claudia, Dean Anson who was here as Chair of Conservation, Mr. Forrester, Mark Haynes, Mike, and Counselor Hamel. And I agree, it was interesting. It's a good way to learn about the city, about how it functions, and how the city department heads take their jobs very seriously, and that was encouraging. And I guess since the fire department made their presentation, Kirk has become the chief, so he was acting years before, so I'm sure he ratifies it. And it was also, for me personally, it was very interesting to hear our public works director, who clearly knows how to do civil engineering stuff, with a great deal of enthusiasm and knowledge, explain the Court Street project, for example. Because if you're driving through it every day, it's like, what is this? What? You know, there are potholes big enough to sink a Jeep. What is going on here? But he's, you know, he explained how they had to phase everything, how they, they have, actually, you look at one project, but it's actually a half a dozen different public works projects. There's a bridge, and there's this project, and they have to time it so that people can cross the bridge. So, in the future, I would encourage any members of the public or the planning board to get involved in the process because it's very, very interesting. So, I think at this point, unless there's any other questions or comments, I think we need a simple motion to...
I have a quick question.
Yes, of course, Gail.
The maintain and repair city streets, do we have a inkling where those city streets are?
Well, if I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, that item is in the budget every year. It's in their, their application every year. They have a ruling prioritization project kind of way of doing it. So, no, I think at this point, they couldn't tell you exactly what they're going to do, but they could give you a good idea of what the order in which things are going to have to be done.
That's my understanding, because I was on the CIP committee.
Right.
Prior previously.
Right.
And they gave us a hierarchy of where they were going to begin and end, depending on the monies.
Right. Well, see, if you look at the first item, it says city cost share for Court Street Bridge Replacement Project.
Mm-hmm.
Now, again, that's one of the projects within the project known as Court Street, and that's the bridge where Derky Brook goes right underneath Route 3, and that's a big deal for the businesses in that area because that's gonna shut traffic down, or are they doing both lanes? They're not gonna do both lanes at the same time, I don't think, I forget.
On the bridge, yes.
They are? Yeah. So, that's, that's a big deal, and that's a lot of money, and that's a major project, and the city does have to pay a share of that. So, that much we knew, that money's pretty much dedicated. Maintain and repair city streets, you know, they might have a plan, for example, to do a stretch of Union Avenue, but then a water main break changes everything.
Yeah.
Right? In fact, in one of the examples they gave is the stretch of Union Avenue from Main Street to the hospital. They've had repeated water mains breaks at the base of High Street Hill, and that's necessitated a great deal of excavation, and it affects the roadbed. He also told us something I didn't know anything about. One relatively new environmental requirement is the material that they remove from the substrate when they're repaving, when they want to get down into the, the roadbed, any of that material down to a certain depth has to be treated basically as hazardous waste because it's been absorbing substances from the roadbed for all those years. They can, they either have to reuse it in place, or they have to pay a special hauler to haul it off to a special dump. And I, actually, I think, I heard him say they burn it. They incinerate it. Is that, is that what he said? Yeah. They incinerate the dirt, which I would imagine is a relatively expensive process. So, yeah, like I said, I learned a lot, and I'm grateful that, that I was given the chance to do that. So, yes, David?
Just as an overview, what we've been doing for the past, I don't know, three or four years is, we'll fund general maintenance and repair of the cities at about 1.5 or 1.6 million. And then, we'll look to do a kind of, let's get, let's forget about the worst for the time being, not forever, but for the time being, and do some maintenance and repair to roads that we can keep. to roads that we can keep their longevity for a greater period of time. And then we have the special projects that we fund separately through bonding or, or whatever, like Court Street Phase 2. And we're already sort of done Phase 1 and we'll be doing Phase 2 next year. And we'll probably be doing from Lakeport to Stark Street.
Yep.
Next year also, that's on the, that's on the agenda.
Yep. And, and like the Councilman said, if you look at the first two items, you know, it's a million five for one project and then it's a million five for everything else, basically, right? Because it says a million five, this is the state's, is the city's share of the bridge and then, oh, that's right, a million five for maintain, a million six for maintain and repair city streets, so that's huge. And, and that's, again, I think it's a testament to the management, the, the department heads that the council can invest so much discretion in them because, you know, here's a million six, go see what you can do with it. That's, that's a testament to, to trust right there.
We're catching up, we're catching up. It's a long, slow process and it'll take some time, but the downtown by the end of next summer is going to look a lot better.
Right, when you build the new parking garage up here, you mean?
Yeah, when we blow the old one up and build the new one.
Accidentally blow, accidentally blow the old one up. That's not, we should not joke about that, that is someone's real estate, that's terrible. Yes.
Mr. St. Clair would like to say a word or...
Do you have something to add constructive?
I do have something to add constructive, at least for the businesses on Court Street and for that matter, most of the businesses downtown. As you know, during its construction, and this is really for our City Council here because I know he'll pass on to the rest of the City Council, when that, when that construction's going on down there, there's a big electronic sign with a bypass is encouraging people to take the bypass all around downtown.
Yeah.
It just, you know, go around. And I, after discussions with the Weers Bridge Construction over the railroad tracks up there, it was pointed out to the DOT that they really need to not be treating this as a nine to five job. And they encouraged the, the construction to be going to at least a minimum of 10 hours a day, if not longer.
That's what they're going to do with the, with the Weers Bridge.
Excuse me, I just want to, I just want to hope and point out, and I hope, and I'm speaking for businesses that have reached out to me, that, that the construction next year, when the construction season starts on Court Street again, that they're encouraged to work longer to try to get it finished quicker. That's all, that's all I want to say. I know you agree with that, David.
I'm 100% on board with that.
I know you are, I just wanted to go on record as saying it since we have this wonderful television system here, because I was asked to say that and I, and I said I would. Because I, I personally think that somebody has to kind of lean on some of these construction companies.
Considering, considering the weather that we had this year.
I know, I, I understand, I understand.
We, we really did make good progress.
So I guess on those nice days, they got to work a little longer.
On those nice days, there were a couple, there were a couple of rough days.
I understand that, I understand that.
I'm getting Wimbledon neck here. Okay, so, and I just want to say, my footnote to this is, I was very pleased with my pet project here, the drainage improvements at, at Bond and Bartlett Beach were pretty raining pretty high. I happened to be taking a phone call one day and I'm like, I'm going to pull over, I'm right near Bartlett Beach, so I pull into Bartlett Beach and it had been raining, it was one of those typical recent days where it'd been raining all day. And I looked around, because I had never really paid attention to the drainage at Bartlett Beach, you know what it is? It's a ditch around the parking lot. It doesn't go anywhere, it's, it's a wetland. That's all it is, there's trees growing in it. It doesn't go anywhere, there isn't even, I couldn't even see a culvert going underneath the road, so I think they need it and it's long overdue.
You know who, you know who you have to thank for that?
You?
No. No, don't ever thank me for anything, it's a waste of time.
Must be the mayor, then?
No.
No.
Brenda Bear.
And she's responsible for the ditch around the parking lot?
No, she's responsible to get the Bond and Bartlett Beach drainage improvements on the table at the City Council and moving it forward.
And then we will all...
I think you're responsible for the ditch.
No, that's just, that's just where I was before I became Chair.
Digging the ditch.
Yeah, I see you out there at night with your shovel, I got it.
I spent a few years in the ditch, as it were. Okay, so, please, could we have a motion somewhere?
Yeah, I move to approve the capital improvements program as submitted.
And recommend that, it, it to the City Council, sir?
Yes, we forward it on to the City Council for their review and approval.
Thank you. There is a motion by Counselor Browns.
Second.
There's a second by Representative St. Clair. Are there any questions or further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye or raising your hand or whatever you wish, those that are opposed, and another unanimous vote from the Speedy Planning Board this evening. Thank you. And thank you again for those of you that served on the committee, it was marvelous. All right, where are we? Old business?
Business.
No.
Can I ask, may I ask another question?
Sure, old business.
I was just curious, Dean, has there been any work, was there any work done this fall on Langley Cove and their project? Was there anything touched up there?
None, no, nothing.
No.
On Langley Cove, none, but they did do the repair work in Pogus Woods that they were required to do. They did do that.
They did?
Yes.
That gladdens the heart of the Chair. It's a record reflect.
They're working on the bicycle path.
Is there any old business, old business? How about the report of the Planning Department?
I wanted to officially invite all of you, since you're very needed volunteers for the city, the city every year for Christmas puts on a city luncheon. This year it happens to be December 14th, which is a Friday at noon at the Community Center. You're all invited to bring your appetite. There is a tradition that new employees sing. I don't think it applies to new board members, but, you know, if you wanted to, it should, yeah, right. So anyway, I wanted to officially invite you to that on December 14th.
David, you're not to sing.
Pardon?
You are not to sing.
He wasn't playing on it.
Also remind everyone that we are still looking for liaison to, for the Conservation Commission, so if anybody has thought about that and would like to do that, that would be great, you could see either me or see Peter and...
Yep.
We'll get you...
Come on, you Conservation Commissioners, come on.
Did you, did you, did we fill up Lake's Region?
We have not.
Okay, so we need somebody to serve on the Lake's Region Planning Commission as well. And you guys are going to get me some sort of a meeting schedule for them, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I think I'm on it now.
Okay. All right, so you may be, you may be to fill, we'll have to check, see who we have.
Yeah, it's not me, it's another resident. Yeah, I know.
They, they, they usually have really good food at their meetings.
Actually, if you're, if you're serving, we probably don't need an additional person for Lake's Region.
I can bring a guest, though, for the luncheon. I mean, this was a long time ago, but let me tell you, I was so used to being a volunteer in groups like this, to go to a meeting and have like somebody bring catered food, I was like, really? You know, we're lucky to get donuts at work. So, it was nice. They, you know. Anyway, okay, anything else from, from the staff? Everyone's, everyone's doing okay? And the holidays are upon us? Is there any other business to this evening?
I just have one...
Liaison reports, yes.
Question if I could.
Yes, Dave.
Mr. St. Clair brought up a point. I know it's down the road, but there's word out there and there's all kinds of people talking about the bridge at Weers Beach.
Yes.
And is that going to majorly impact all the businesses and all the people that live there?
Yes. Yes.
Absolutely.
For how long?
Hopefully in five weeks, maybe six.
About the six weeks, we hope.
In the fall?
No, it'll be in the spring.
In the spring.
In the spring, they're going to try to get it done before by...
Before Memorial Day weekend.
Before Memorial Day weekend.
Actually, it'll be before, if everything goes right, it'll be before the month of May even starts.
So in April?
And they're going to work long hours and they, they decided that it made better sense to just close the bridge rather than try to do a lane at a time. Yes, it's going to be a major, majorly detour. If you need to get across the bridge from one side or the other, you're going to have to go all the way around Pogus Bay, but it's worth, it has to be done, there's no question that it has to be done.
Well, nobody closing it completely, it does, you know, shorten the time quite significantly.
Yeah.
Instead of making one half safe, people traveling, working, and yeah.
You know, I don't understand the bu, the bypass that was through the drive, drive-in and all that, what was that all about?
That was for emergency vehicles and I don't...
How was he going to get across the channel?
Fly a boat.
He wasn't going to get across the channel.
No, it's not crossing the channel.
No, they used the regular, they used the regular bridge to get across the channel and then they would go down the embankment.
Oh, I see, okay.
They'd take the left, down by the marinas.
Gotcha.
Right there.
Yeah, all right. That's what I forget, there's two bridges there.
Yeah.
Well, it's not the, it's not the big bridge that goes over...
It's the railroad bridge.
It's the railroad bridge that needs fixing.
Yes, yeah, but you know what? You can't get to one until you do the other.
And I think, David, they asked them to, if I recall, they asked them to look at the big bridge to do some work on the cement, on the sides.
I think they are going to do that.
And they're going to try to save the architectural style, the Art Deco, and those are pretty rigid. I was thinking the other day, oh, we, one of the other committees while we're on liaison is the Master Plan Steering Committee, we had a, a meeting last week. And there was a great deal of talk about the master plan recommendations and one of the ones that we, well, we didn't spend too much time on Hilliard Road, but it's, it's an intriguing idea, the, the future development of the city in that area, we're going to start, I think, looking at zoning, but, because, you know, that, that rural district up there, RR1 and RR2, they probably need to be adjusted quite a bit and we want to do that in a, in a thorough way. We want to look at downtown Laconia, and David will tell you, one of the suggestions that came up, it's a good one, is to maybe redefine the downtown zone so that it matches the Tiff Zone and kind of do a movement towards a little bit more flexibility with the staff as to approving a project. So we'll get back to you on all that, but wow, the other day, some of us were talking, friends of mine, about the Laconia bypass and, and I'll tie this together in a minute. So, the bypass, as you know, runs from, from Court Street to...
This is boring.
From Court Street to Route 11, but it was intended to be a through road, obviously. The south end was supposed to go all the way to Franklin, that's why there is no exit 21, and the north end was supposed to go all the way to Meredith. And I always wondered in my head, how the hell were they planning on getting through the Weers? And then it dawned on me the other day that, well, they would have had to redo the bridge, but you theoretically could do something like that now by bringing a new road across and joining up to 11B in the vicinity of White Oaks Road and then bringing that traffic down into that, that circle and then across the bridge. And then what if there was a connector from that intersection where the sign is through, say, where the drive-in is to Hilliard Road and across to Parade Road?
And that's going to happen.
Oh, I know, but the corridor exists and the thing is that when they first laid out the road, there was a lot less development in the city. There's not much way, not many, not many areas left in the city where you could do a project like that, but it just seemed like a really nifty idea to actually be able to bring that traffic and swing it through the Weers, but then bring it all the way out onto the other side, I don't know. Everything that we would do in those regards would have an impact on the people on the existing roads, so, right, Keller House probably wouldn't like that one very much. Okay, enough from me. Yes, it is very boring, David, but you know what?
You're the chairman.
I am the chairman. And I do like to hear myself talk and just the microphone and everything, it's just, it's unavoidable. Is there any other business that we could attend to this evening?
Yeah, I just want to give an explanation.
Oh, oh, the City Council liaison report, I am so sorry.
No, I, I think you've given a good summary of where the master plan subcommittee is and what we're doing and it was a good meeting, but I, I just want an explanation when you ask for a show of hands or an ask for an aye. If you ask for a show of hands because we're being recorded and we're on TV, everybody knows who's watching, which is probably two or three people, everybody knows how they voted. If you just ask for, say aye, you don't have that kind of clarity with respect to how members are voting. So I just think it better to raise your hands so that the few people who are watching know exactly how everybody voted and if you want to go back and review it on YouTube, you can do that and you can see how, and they can say like, "Bowns voted for that." I'm never going to vote for that guy again.
All those who agree with David, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Can I have a motion adjourned, please?
Both hands.
Don't move.
Both hands.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. I will not allow discussion on this motion. Motion is granted, see you all next year.
Yes.
Thank you for your service this year on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
And have a very merry Christmas.
I'm broke down, sitting in the parking lot outside.
For those of you I won't see on some other committee.